Thank you very much. Welcome to our month of D. We are here to accomplish the business of schools for the sake of our students. We do want to hear from our citizens and there's time for public comment prior to the action items on the agenda. We ask that speakers identify themselves and their home district. We also ask that your comments are limited to three minutes in order to provide equity to all speakers and to ensure that our meeting is reasonable and it's linked. If you have more information than can be summarized in three minutes, please provide leave behind materials for the boards of review. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks as time has elapsed. If you have questions during the session, you may ask for clarification from your school board member or a school administrator after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening?
The move.
Is there a motion, Mr. Grove? Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Rubin. All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Close the door. It's a order. Report to the school board liaison.
How are you guys?
Good.
Good.
Alright, so start us off. So for NHS, the back pipe program will continue as it did last school year with transportation being provided during flex period to the food pantry. Several NHS members volunteered at the Taste Rock Panic last Saturday at 7:00. A blood drive will take place next month, October 30th, and we have a road plant along Rockmails Road, which will take place next month as well. For seniors, our senior trip this year is going to Disney, so right now we're selling blankets and then, yeah, so hopefully we'll raise a lot of money for that. The SAT will be held at RTHS on October 5th and the peer mentor program and pride clubs will continue as well. Do you guys have any questions?
Questions? Do you have chaperones for Disney girls coming up yet?
Yeah. Yeah. So with the chaperone. The chaperone presentation.
Thanks, scholar. Thank you. All right, donations. Do you have a summary for this man, Clark?
Yes. Edna Snyder donated tissues to the kindergarten in six grade classes. Philip and Penny Partis donated $2,878.93 to clear all student lunch debt for the 2018-19 school year. David Gerald donated school supplies to the elementary school. And Shuttles Cars and Trucks donated $200 to the football program.
And those donations will be accepted during the consent agenda? Is there a motion to adopt and approve the amendments from our August meeting?
I support.
Motion. Ms. Bynum, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Grove. Is there any comments? All in favor? Let's go and say aye. Aye, close no. It's a order. Mr. Grove, did you have opportunity to review bills?
I did. And everything in order. I was astonished at the amount that we have to save for sewage and stuff, but within that and...
It's better if you say lagoon.
Well, it's sewage.
It's more romantic.
Yeah. Maybe. However, just for people...
Yeah, how much?
Forty thousand dollars.
Forty thousand dollars in sewage management?
Yeah.
Yep.
It did, that number just jumped right up.
That's our, and that's our annual contract now, so that's the entire year. You won't see more bills like that.
I understand.
Okay.
We hope.
I hope.
We hope.
Okay, go back now.
Alright. Alright, the consent agenda contains approval of the donations, payment of the bills, attendance report, and home school student report. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Can I ask a question?
Question?
Yeah. The, on the home school, is that, am I reading that right? Did we have some more, some youngsters come back into the...
We did.
From the home school?
Yes, we did.
Okay, good.
Alright, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? We have a motion, Mr. Rubin. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Bynum. All in favor? Aye. Alright, aye, close no. It's a order. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. This is the time of year where we get really excited to honor some of our students and teachers who have achieved something really remarkable, especially since the past six years. The standards of learning exams have been revised and revised again to really hit on deeper learning and higher order thinking skills. So it's a lot harder nowadays to get a perfect score on a standards of learning test. So we do make that a big deal and this room is full, so it looks like we have a lot of students to recognize. So at this time, I'm going to invite principals to come up, well, in this case, Mrs. Carol Johnson for the elementary school, Mr. Jimmy Swindler from the high school, there you are, to present these awards.
So when we get, when we do this, we're gonna get a picture. We get a picture of the group.
Here we go.
So when the, so when the young people come up, they probably should just kind of stay in one area over here maybe, instead of going back and coming back again? Yep?
Alright, what an honor to be able to recognize our students this evening. At the elementary school, we're recognizing those students who achieve a score of, I'm sorry. This, I'm sorry, this is, elementary school is 90% pass rate or higher, so this is between 90% to 100%, which is...
A percentage.
Okay, sorry. So 100% for the students.
Right.
Alright, so perfect score of 600 for our elementary school students. So when I call your name, if you would please come forward. First, we have Logan Chapman. He had a perfect score in the 4th grade reading last year. Way to go, Logan. We'd like to next recognize for a perfect score of 600 in the 4th grade math, Faith Harrison. And a perfect score in 5th grade reading, Mason Comer. And then a perfect score for 5th grade math, Kaya Cooper. And a perfect score in 5th grade reading, Isaac Plaxton. Another perfect score in 5th grade reading for Everett Zook. And a perfect score in 5th grade reading, Isaac Plaxton. Another perfect score in 5th grade reading for Everett Zook. And for a perfect score in 7th grade reading, Samuel Purdue. And moving back to 4th grade, to a very difficult test, the Virginia Studies, we had a perfect score for Harrison King.
He already passed the test.
He did. Another perfect score in 4th grade Virginia Studies, Alora Miller. And a perfect score in 7th grade civics for Isaac Shuland. And another perfect score in 4th grade Virginia Studies for Jason Striegel. And there's always a lot of people that help our students to get there, the teachers as well as their parents and families that support them. We would like to also recognize teachers this evening who exceeded the 90% pass rate for 4th grade math. Mrs. Bethany Bostick exceeded that one. And another 90% or higher pass rate was for 6th grade math for Candace Jackson. And then math must have been the one last year, because Mrs. Molly Bailey also exceeded the goal in 5th grade math. Congratulations.
Everyone wants to shift just a little bit. Nice. Alright. 600, enough? Yes, if you want to hold it there.
Yeah, you go.
Yeah. 600, come on! Congratulations. Before you guys leave, we do have cookies for you, so hold on.
Alright, my name is Jimmy Swindler. I'm the principal up here at the high school and to all of you young people who just got that recognition, I'm looking forward to doing the same thing for you when you get up here at the high school. Couple of you are already here, so I'll be looking forward to doing this with you next spring and next fall. We do have four students that we would like to recognize tonight. Three of the four are here. I'll first recognize Jay Switzer, who got a 600 in grade 8 writing. He couldn't be here tonight, but congratulations to Jay. Next up, we have Mr. Nicholas Plaskin, who got a 600 on his grade 8 writing. And then we have Ms. Skylar Culbertson, who got a 600 on her junior class end of course writing. And then last but not least, we have Ms. Lauren Petty, who also scored a perfect 600 on her end of course writing at the 11th grade. While I have Ms. Petty, I also want to announce, we're gonna scoop the press tomorrow, see if I get this right. The National Merit Scholarship Corporation will be announcing the names of the 16,000 students from all across America who were National Merit Scholarship semifinalists, right? And one of those will be our own Lauren Petty. That's a big deal. As Ms. Johnson noted, the student success is also a function of the teachers that we have in this building who we're very proud of. We had six teachers last year who got a 100% pass rate with their SOL classes, their classes where the students took the test and every single student passed the test. And that's a big deal. I don't know, some of them are here, some of them are not. Scott Stevens, our longtime math teacher, got 100% with his Algebra II class. And Mr. Stevens is coaching football this afternoon and it was his wife's birthday, so he figured he better go home. Good idea. Is Dawn Roseberry here? Dawn Roseberry? No. Alright, Dawn Roseberry, she got 100% with her Math 8 class. Nineteen kids in the class and all nineteen of them passed the SOL. Dawn Roseberry. And that, by the way, I think is the third straight semester that Ms. Roseberry has gotten 100% with at least one of her SOL classes. It's pretty commendable. Dave Mazer, longtime teacher here, he had 100% with his chemistry class. He's not here tonight, but we recognize Dave. Jessica Kelly also couldn't be here. Her daughter had a ballet recital, I believe it was, but she achieved 100% pass rate with her grade 8 writing class with 18 students. Then I know I've got at least one teacher here, Ms. Sheila Lamb, who achieved 100% pass rate with her end of course writing class with juniors, and here she comes to making her way up. And Ms. Two is the second or third, maybe fourth time that Ms. Lamb has achieved 100% pass rate. And our last one, and I think right now he's working with his drama students, getting ready for the fall production, the VHSL production, but that would be Mr. Russell Paulet, who also had 100% of his students pass their end of course writing test.
Alright, so, I don't want you to feel trapped. We're gonna have some cookies. The cookies are on the table over here. We're gonna have some cookies and take a short recess in case you want to escape the school board meetings. Okay. You want to stay, it's perfectly alright, but we understand you have things you might want to do, and so grab a cookie. And be neighborly. Here we are for, I don't know, five minutes or so. Cookie break. You have had sufficient opportunity to escape. You're not trapped here. You can always go.
Need a cookie.
Alright, we're resuming at agenda item 4.2 if you're tracking with us.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. We'd like to give an update on our summer residential governor's school program. So at this time, I'll ask Ms. Lilo Wolfart to get discussions to come up and talk to us about that, and I believe you have some guest students to come up with.
We do, yes. And I just want to say, this is really to say thank you. We want to say thank you to you as a community, to our school board for providing this service. My own son participated in this years ago and it gave him direction for his career. So I want to make sure that you always know, we appreciate that you made this available. Tonight, I have Alec Petty and Philip Wyatt here. And the slideshow is just a little something to show you, a little information about the history. The governor's school is held at the different Virginia colleges around the state. These two boys here went to, two specific ones this past summer. In this slideshow, I featured some other students who went the year prior to this that couldn't make it tonight. So there's some information about the number of students that participate. These two boys actually also attend our regional governor's school, which is mentioned in the information as well. So if you want to slide forward, I'll let you see the first part of this slide there is, shows Radford and Sophia Hernandez went there for vocal, voice talent and was thrilled with her experience and included some slides of that for you to see that there was a performance, there were professors to be with and lasting associates to have from then on. The slides on the right were from Alec, and that's Alec. So I'd like to...
Okay. So I spent a month at the Math, Science, and Technology Governor's School down at the University of Lynchburg, and basically I took a class called Electron Control, which basically taught me the fundamentals of electrical engineering and computer logic. So basically, I learned how to build basic circuits, binary, and I learned how to solder. So those are some pictures of a solder job I did. I basically made a circuit with resistors and transistors, and the top layer is a bread board, and I made a binary adder with some circuits, I guess.
Okay, so I went to the Governor's School for Agriculture at Virginia Tech. This is an excellent opportunity because I got to see a lot more of the campus than I hadn't seen before. This is my number one pick at the moment. We learned, we had college lectures every day for about eight hours during the week, and we had a lot of cool field trips to Kentland Farm, which is the farm associated with Virginia Tech. That's where they have a lot of their post-grad work. We learned about drone usage in agriculture. We learned about animal science and a lot of agribusiness, so we took college economics classes as well. I met a lot of cool people and learned a lot, and this was kind of surprising because a lot of the kids there did not know much about agriculture. I guess that's why they attended. A lot of them were from Northern Virginia, and there's about 10 kids from agricultural backgrounds that had any prior experience.
So, thank you. The other attendee the year before was Heather Smith, and she went to the school for the humanities, and as it said on there, the discourse is what she raved about, the ability to discuss philosophy and all kinds of topics, current events, and just to share. And I know Ellie's shaking her head, her son attended, I believe, the humanities as well. And so, thank you, and we appreciate that you continue to differentiate in providing the services you provide.
Thanks for sharing that.
I'll just comment that the summer quest, the middle school summer quest was a lot of fun for those who attended as well. I got to see the end of, the end of the program show, and it was really neat to see all these kids so excited about learning, just excited about learning their subjects, and that's a great opportunity, and I'm glad we support it and continue to.
Item 4.3 is our annual accreditation report, which still hasn't completely been finalized by the state yet. I hear they're going to release our actual school quality profiles online on the DOE site anytime now, but I will give you a little preview of what that should look like. This accreditation report is really what we look to, to validate what we're doing, and you can see all the successful students we have and the success our teachers realize, and that all builds into what we see as our accreditation. So just a reminder of our mission, that our CPS is to promote a culture of learning, a roadmap for excellence, and the passion and character that leads to each student's success. Now, if you recall, last year was the first year we had a brand new system designed by the state, okay? So now the accreditation standards provide a more comprehensive view of school quality, encourages continuous improvement, and it places increased emphasis on closing achievement gaps, okay? So it's all well intended, as these accreditation systems always are. There are some problematic things for us as a smaller division. I'm sure there are plenty for larger districts as well, and we will talk about some of that and what we've done, and we'll see it reflected in the report. But basically, new accreditation ratings, they were really creative, red, yellow, green for traffic light, you know, and green means go, so successful, yellow, you're pretty close, and red, oh, you might want to look at this, kind of thing. So there's only three ratings accredited, so you have to have everything at a green or a yellow, level one or level two, to make sure you're accredited in all of your indicators. You get accredited with conditions if you have one or more school quality indicator at level three, just one, okay? So just one will knock you into accredited with conditions now. And then your accreditation is denied if you fail to adopt or fully implement a required corrective action plan to address any of your level three indicators. So that's very different than what we've seen. Last year was the first year on that new system. And if you recall, last year we talked about the absenteeism as a piece that really concerned us because of our numbers. So chronic absenteeism, it doesn't take too many absences to accumulate to knock your accreditation into warning. So for a smaller district, that's really concerning, and a lot of superintendents across the state are saying, hey, we have no control over that, you know, so why are you holding us accountable for something you can't do too much about? But we did what we could. So here are the new accreditation standards. All schools are accredited based on these standards, these indicators. So your overall English and math of all your students' proficiency and growth, so at least they've added in growth indicators, which we do appreciate. Overall science proficiency, English achievement gaps among student groups, math achievement gaps among student groups, and then your absenteeism. And that's for elementary and middle. High school is all the same, but it adds in the graduation components, your graduation completion index, dropout rate, and also college career and civic ratings is an indicator there for high school, so a lot different than we perceive. Again, there's our new performance levels, red, yellow, and green. The chronic absenteeism defined schools with a current or three-year average of no more than 15%, missing 10% of the school year is what you need to get that indicator. Now, when we ran our 1617 data on the new accreditation system, we were really worried because we would have been at both schools in the red. Not for anything that, I mean, our performance went up, but our chronic absenteeism went down, we wouldn't have been accredited even though we were performing better, okay? So that was a major issue that superintendents, especially in smaller districts, said, hello, how is that fair? Especially when state law is very clear about if the parent is aware that the kid is absent, you don't really have any enforcement patrimony at all, if they're aware of the absence, and there's not much more to do with that. So if that's the case, then how can you hold schools that accountable for something you can't control? So that's our big issue with the absenteeism piece. It makes sense. We want kids in school, we do everything we can. I know there's some parents in here, and if you have kids absent, I bet you're getting lots of phone calls. That's one of our methods, is just bugging you to death that, hey, do you know your children's yet? Okay, good. So that's one of our, we have a tier system where we do meet with parents and meet with teachers and talk about absenteeism, so, and that seems to really have worked quite, quite well. So here is our performance, fully accredited, both schools, everything is green and yellow. And to the areas that we were worried about, English achievement gap, remember last year our big influx of ESL students? And we said, this is gonna hit us because of our size. And something else that we are clamoring the state for is because you can make it on your current year, our numbers usually put us in a too small category to calculate, but then when you knock us into a three-year average, even though the numbers are too small, now it counts. And if that performance measure is lower than planned, then you have, your accreditation is at risk. So for us, every single score is really important. So that's something we're trying to advocate at the state level for, is that they put back the small n even for the three-year average. It shouldn't be calculated that way, because in that one single year, it could knock your accreditation out.
Is the consortium that you're working with, working on that as well?
Yes.
The small schools?
Not just the rural schools consortium, but there's a Title III consortium as well for small rural districts, and both are advocating to put back the small n indicator for the three-year average. So hopefully, we get that tackled, so we don't, but we still made it even with that problem, so I'm really proud. And then chronic absenteeism at the high school, we did much better, but it's still something we need to work on. But again, those, those areas, I'm pretty pleased with what everyone's done, that's very great.
Mike, want to explain what chronic absenteeism is, because there is a formula.
Right, and on that last slide, right here?
Oh, it's there.
It is there for you to see how that's calculated. So if you, to get into level three, it doesn't take much, average chronic absenteeism. So here is our performance, fully accredited, both schools, everything is green and yellow. And to the areas that we were worried about, English achievement gap, remember last year, our big influx of ESL students? And we said, this is going to hit us because of our size. And something else that we are clamoring the state for is because you can make it on your current year, our numbers usually put us in a too-small category to calculate. But then, when you knock us into a three-year average, even though the numbers are too small, now it counts. And if that performance measure is lower than planned, then you have, your accreditation is at risk. So for us, every single score is really important. So that's something we're trying to advocate at the state level for, is that they put back the small n even for the three-year average. It shouldn't be calculated that way because in that one single year, it could knock your accreditation out.
Is the consortium that you're working with, working on them as well?
Yes.
The small schools?
Not just the rural schools consortium, but there is a Title III consortium as well for small rural districts. And both are advocating to put back the small n indicator for the three-year average. So hopefully, we get that tackled so we don't, but we still made it even with that problem. So I'm really proud. And then, chronic absenteeism at the high school. We did much better, but it's still something we need to work on. But again, those areas, I'm pretty pleased with what everyone's done. That's very great.
Mike, want to explain what chronic absenteeism is? Because there is a formula.
Right. And on that last slide right here?
Oh, it's there.
It is there for you to see how that's calculated. So if you, to get into level three, it doesn't take much. Average chronic absenteeism rate of 25% or more will get you into that level-three rate. So you've got to...
Forty-five.
Yeah. Twenty-five. It's 15% at the yellow.
Seventy-five.
Okay. So there we are. Here's just some, the score breakdowns. So you can see the difference in the three-year average. I didn't have it for the previous year on here at the absenteeism level, but you'll see the three-year average is 19%. The year before, 31%. So our tiered intervention system for chronic absenteeism is working really well. So we really diminished that number. So it is working. But that takes our parents understanding how important that is. And they really come on board as team members to us, to help us with that. And here's your high school. Those are amazing scores. We're really, really pleased. It's harder as a smaller district to get scores like that because every one child is so... Any questions about that?
I just wanted to say, I've heard comments from parents that the way that it's being communicated about absenteeism has been really positive. Like we talked about in the school board meeting, that we're concerned about your child, we would love to have them for her in school. That's, that message is really coming through, so kudos to Mr. Swindler for getting that tone right, rather than a punitive tone, a caring tone. And that makes all the difference, I think, to people wanting to participate and make sure their kids are in school.
Thank you.
The next item I'm very, very excited about, we've been talking to you about this for a little over a year now. This is the Children's Savings Account Program. So I did want to update you on the progress we've made toward this end, and we're really excited about this. So if you remember a while back, the whole conversation started, I see Kat and Eevee here, who helped us get this started too, around this idea that we have all this wonderful shift of focus to graduating kids to be life-ready instead of college-ready, okay? And that has a lot of different facets and components to it. The problem with exposing everyone to that at the high school level is, wow, there's so much I can do now. And they go to fill out all the paperwork and applications and things, and parents might say, oh, no, put up a barrier right away. We didn't plan for that. And you see the kids' faces just kind of sink. And what do you mean I can't do that? But they're telling me I can do all this great, all these great things, and now I can't go. So that conversation was starting really late for a lot of our kids, especially as we're realizing higher poverty rates in the school. We have to do more planning a whole lot earlier. So this project came into focus, and we looked at what a lot of other states were doing. And children's savings accounts idea was sort of born. And what the vision for that is for that life readiness, that we're graduating with a plan for the future, financial capacity, which is a big piece of how you get there, right? And it matches our comprehensive plan goal of a roadmap for excellence. Part of that roadmap has to be your tools to get there, right? So then, also, in academic personal skills, to pursue that plan confidently and successfully. So the whole idea of this project and concept was to do these things, but oh, man, there's a lot to that, right? So the idea behind the program was we start that conversation in kindergarten, where every child that registers at Rappahannock County Schools gets a $100 savings account in their name, okay? A real savings account. And then, we build that conversation with the families, providing financial capacity education as well, and say, at this point in time, with little five-year-old Johnny, what do you want for your child at this point? And there's a lot more that seems possible when they're so little. Well, I would love my child to do this, but I'm not sure how to get there. Well, what if we could set up that roadmap at that point in time? There's a lot more years and a lot more resources we can leverage to get them there. So the idea was that every student is offered a My Future Account. Every student actively prepares for financial independence in activities that are aligned with state career college preparation mandates. And part of that is that our teachers that we were talking to about this say, wow, I already do so many things where I incentivize or reward students for their performance. Wouldn't it be great to have these kind of financial triggers that actually go into a visual tangible statement with real money, you know? That's something real. So now, we're teaching habit of mind, habit of earning, those types of things. Every student develops academic personal skills for lifelong learning and career success in association with savings and financial capability. And every child's family, and this was a biggie, has opportunities to build and apply financial decision-making skills. It's a skill that we can help support our families build on, and they know what research sources are available, and they have support systems to get them there. So the program targets was not just the accounts themselves, that's just the tool that we could use, something tangible, meaningful, real-world, and build on for that. The other piece is the adult services. So if you remember last spring, we had a recap, we had this new group forming called Family Futures. And they said, there's a lot we need to do to get there. We want to launch in January 2020, which is this coming January. But they need to, they needed to complete their 501 designation with the IRS, become a bona fide 501(c)(3), continue securing pledges, contract for fundraising plan, data collection evaluation. We need a full-time financial coach. That's like a big piece of this, to help launch the program and then build in the components that are so important to us as profile of graduate. Develop a website, communications plan, execute agreements with key partners, and purchase a software program that will integrate confidentially and appropriately with our student integration systems, right? Because that's super important, and that is a must. So all of those pieces had to be completed. So they did that. We've got lots of pledges. We have identified and currently training right now our first full-time financial coach. Hopefully, we can execute an agreement tonight that will help us launch in January. And the software has been identified that is particular to this cause. So a lot has happened. The other pieces can fall in before that, as long as we have our person and our plan approved. But then, you know, big thing with funding, how are you going to fund all of this? Because that takes a lot. Just a full-time person is, you know, the salary benefits and all that put together $60,000 around that. And then, you need to seed all the accounts, all the accounts at the beginning, and have incentives every year. So that's a lot, that's another $7,500. And, you know, we were adamant, anytime I have these crazy ideas, they say, well, that sounds great, go get a grant. So, okay. So what happened was Headwaters comes to the table and says, you know what? That really, really aligns with what we're thinking about for the Profile of Graduate and the redesign and strategic planning we're doing. So they came in to half-support the full-time position as well as seed all of the kindergarten accounts. So thank you so much to Headwaters. And then, we thought, okay, well, we need some training funding and, you know, for the software, all of that integration is quite a bit of money. The software alone is about $10,000. So here comes Path Foundation, says, hey, this sounds like a great idea, and we'd be the first in Virginia to pilot it. Other states are doing similar programs, so we're creating a model here. So Path Foundation came in with some training support money and software money as well. So grant money came in. And then, Family Futures, once they became a full 501(c)(3), they secured the pledges to get the other half of the full-time position. So they came in with that funding as well as other funding for other training pieces, the contracting plans, and for the continuation. We've got commitments for the next three years to study the proof of concept on this program. So we're really excited about that. I can't believe it came together. I can't believe it. So we're really excited about the opportunities and equity this will bring to our kids and our families, to really make anything possible for our Rappahannock graduates. And now that we're talking to them, starting in kindergarten and build this capacity, every student eventually down the road will have their own savings account, which they tailor as they get to the eighth grade and set up their academic career plan. They have something they can use to get them there, that vehicle. So, and in processing that and using that piece, they'll have, hopefully, the financial capacity happens in mind, understanding, earning, and those pieces that we see missing so much generationally in some of our students now. So that's to be the learning piece of it. So we are asking tonight that the board approves a memorandum of understanding so we can move forward and get our person officially hired, get the training going, get the software integrated, and launch this program in January for all of our current kindergartners. So we can get that going and see how this works. But for the next three years, we have all the grant funding to do it, study it, and make sure it works.
It's fascinating, and we, there's a lot of background information that is obviously behind us, but this is not like, it's not like the 529. This is something every kindergartner will have, and that family will be able to benefit from for every student, not just the few that take an initiative to figure out the 529 process and what it can and cannot be applied to. And the flexibility with this particular instrument to apply it to whatever that path is for that student, this tech school, college, any number of things. There is still a council that says, yes, this is a worthy use of this funding, but it's generally a great blessing to this community to see this thing starting. And I know everybody's like, well, my kid's in first grade, and I miss the window, right? So that's the only thing I've heard, is I miss this thing, right? So, you know, we can work on that as it continues to grow. It's definitely, you've got to start somewhere, and this is how it starts.
And that was actually the least perky to my question, you know, because I was wondering if the financial advice might be available to older...
Absolutely. And that was a piece of equalizing that, because we know we have to phase in somewhere, like we do with any new program. However, the family financial coach will be available for everybody. We will set up financial events around this concept. This person has great ideas, and I guess I could announce, I guess we've already sort of put it out to staff, but our full-time family financial education coordinator is Ms. Jenny Capsa. She's coming on full-time with us from four ages. So people know her, know she's very successful. She's going to make this just an astonishing hit. And we're not going to lose her to the Profile of Graduate work, because what Headwaters has done is redefine next step to include some of these pieces. So it'll look a little bit different, but it will connect all of these pieces together. So everyone will have access to some type of benefit from this, even if it's not the accounts information.
That's great. You can have all the great plans in the world, but if you don't have money to back them up, then they're...
That's right. We have amazing organizations that came together and continued...
Great thing. And this is a, you know what this reminds me of? Is Commit to be Fit, because it has potential to change the culture, right? To start making, I don't know, like how, not only if you want to do something, but how we're going to achieve this thing. And so it's a great, and we're the first ones in the state.
We are the first ones in the state to try this.
Right.
When's that due, we pass it, then we'll be the first.
We might be the first.
That's a great, that's a great... I'm sure, here's what I see. Three years from now, we're going to be briefing this thing all over the place, just like we are with this international program. We're meant to be fit, right? So applause, taking a step forward. It's the right thing to do. It's for the student, and it's for all the students. So it's a great, great step.
Suppose a parent wanted, they had a kid in fifth grade, wanted to put in $100 at fifth grade, would you manage to save that?
Not yet. Not yet. But maybe we prove concept within the first couple of years, and the donors come forward with the grants, say, we can do them all. It's not, we don't have that many students, so, you know? Maybe that's the hope, if we can get there quicker, we'll, but more quickly.
No public funds.
Yeah. No, we couldn't.
This is not in our book?
No, it's not. Thank you.
Good work.
Very good. Ready to talk about release time? This is a great topic. I'm teaching school law next semester, so this really helped me get my slides in order for one of our topics to master students. So last month, there was a proposal brought before the board from a parent and a group of parents to create a release time policy where students would be released during a particular time during the day to go to a Rolling Chapel program or through CBM. So they gave some background about that, and the board tasked me to do some research on that, look at some policies and law and all those things, and come together with a recommendation. Now, at the time, last month, I said, you know, I would be more concerned, and I'll repeat exactly what I said, I'd be more concerned about infringing on parental rights to release students for religious reasons. Every parent has that right, but I don't, you know, see, I see that as the big reality here. But as I go through these slides, you'll see kind of what, where I stand with that recommendation. And it hasn't changed. Not that there needs to be a special policy or anything, but that our current policy is probably protecting our parents' right to be able to do what they want to do for religious studies. So I'll get us there, but you'll see the line of thinking that I had then in it, now that I've done all the research too, it hasn't really changed. I'll tell you that much. So release time, time set aside during, during school hours, allowing students to be released to receive private religious studies off-school premises. Are these types of programs constitutional? There's a three-prong test used by the Supreme Court to decide that. Is there a secular purpose for approving such a program? Well, the first knee-jerk reaction, everybody's like, well, it can't be secular, it's religious, right? Well, the secular purpose that's constitutional is protecting a parent's right to provide religious instruction. That's the secular purpose. So it's not really the program itself, it's protecting a parental right. Is the primary effect of approving the program advancing or inhibiting religion? That's a big issue for schools. We cannot promote or inhibit both ways. It's not just promotion, it's also inhibiting any religion. And does the program create excessive entanglement between state and religion? And that's the one that gets kind of fuzzy, okay? So that's where you really got to look carefully at these types of programs. There have been cornerstone cases that set precedence for this. McCollum versus Board of Education, 1948, a release time program, reps came into the public schools, came into the public schools to give religious instruction. That did get shot down. It was a violation of First Amendment prohibition against government establishment of the official religion. So that one was a no-no. But then, Zoric came along, and that's been the one that's cited most as good law. Zoric Lawson, 1952, that a release time program is constitutional where classes are off-school property and no public funds are used to finance it. Those are the keys to that one. And that one is still cited today as good case law currently. Some Virginia precedents, 1987, their attorney general opinion permits home instruction for any religious reason, but it doesn't expressly permit or prohibit release time for religious instruction. Smith versus Smith, that one is upheld, citing Zoric again. But public, and the citation in that, in that case was, public school cooperation with the release times program is a largely passive and administratively wise response to a plenitude of parental assertions of the right to direct and up the upbringing and education of children under their control. And that's what was cited for that one. Other precedents, Moss versus Spartanburg County School District. In this one, they, the Court of Appeals, Fourth Circuit upheld South Carolina school district's practice of awarding credit for release time programs. Parents said, well, my student spent this much time in a release time program, can't they get credit? And they did uphold that. Reiterating Zoric is good law, and holding that release time programs and the academic credit received for them is in a combination of a parent's right to choose the type of education their child receives. That right is upheld again and again in case law. So there's arguments for schools adopting release time policy, most certainly, right? If it's properly established, it's definitely constitutional. We have all the case law that shows that. It respects the religious rights of families and parents and students, provides the means by which students can be exposed to teaching that may build good morals, healthy values, recognizes the importance of spiritual well-being, which we know is an important component of whole-child development, no expense to the school district, provides children and families the opportunity for religious instruction that may not otherwise be available. More and more, we have single parents working, can't always get to church on Sundays, don't have access to after-school transportation, so make, you know, making time in the school day seems to make sense for some of those parents. There may be a risk of litigation if schools do not accommodate students to be released for religious reasons. So arguments against adopting this type of policy, instruction during release time alters regular instruction for all students, okay? Peer pressure may exist for non-participants. There may be a risk of litigation if schools accommodate a release program. So both ways, okay? You can be sued for anything. It may, it may open the door for other religious programs to release students. Appearance of a promotion over a particular religion, and compulsory attendance penalties for participants, okay? So those are some of the things that are cited as arguments why they shouldn't do it if the school district... Well, what does our own policy say? All right? So our own policy very specifically says that our CPS has, the school board has to remain neutral in matters of religion and assumes no role or responsibility for the religious training of any student, nor does the school board become involved in the religious belief, disbelief, or doubt of any student. And then, we have... And then we have compulsory attendance rules, right? So all parents must ensure attendance at school for their school-aged children. Then we have some policy around student absences, excuses, and dismissals, which say that we excuse absences for funerals, illness, including mental health, injury, legal obligations, medical procedures, suspensions, expulsions, religious observances, and military obligations. And then there's further JEG exclusions and exemptions, that the school board shall excuse from attendance any student who, together with his parents, by reason of bona fide religious training or belief, is conscientiously opposed to parents at school. Okay? So that's all the policies you kind of have to pull together and look at that. So other guidance, guidelines for religious activities, there's a Virginia Department of Education guidance document that they still use today, that school authorities should determine whether exemptions or exceptions to the policies and practices can be provided in the interest of reasonably accommodating sincerely held religious beliefs. Also, schools should not grant community groups or individuals from outside the school special access to the students during the school day for purposes of proselytizing or distributing, proselytizing literature to students. And release time programs respect the religious nature of our people and accommodate public service to their spiritual needs. And then we have state law. Virginia state law says, "School boards are expressly required to excuse from attendance at school any people who, together with his parents, by reason of bona fide religious training or belief." Usually that states too how are opposed to attendance at school. That also can be a lesson, it could be a well religions lesson, I've seen family life, things like that. Parents have the right, I'm opposed to that, it's against my religion, I don't want my child in that. So we have opt-out rules for that as well, we have to excuse them. But nothing in this section in Virginia state law shall prohibit a pupil and his parents from obtaining an excuse from school attendance by reason of bona fide religious training or belief pursuant to subdivision B1, Section 22.1-254. So that leads me to my recommendation, okay? So that's a lot to digest, a lot on both sides, and it's kind of a slippery slope with legality, right? Because Fourth Circuit kind of has the key on that one and every time it kind of gets bumped up to Supreme Court, they remand it back to Fourth Circuit and say, go with that, Zoric's still good law. But that doesn't mean it's always going to be the case that way, right? So it could be challenged and there could be a deciding precedent educate that would be that. I kind of don't want to be that. So my recommendation is that we don't develop a release time policy, that we don't do it as a school, but understand that even without this policy, programs like this may occur off school campus. I can't tell anyone what to set up outside of the school without any involvement by the public school. We shouldn't have any involvement in that. The school board and school authorities do not participate in nor promote any such programs, but at the same time, we cannot prohibit parents from releasing children for individual religious reasons. If parents do release their children, the same regular dismissal and attendance procedures apply, which we would get written notification that your, your child is dismissed from school just like we do with any other absence from, from class. An instruction for all the other students who do not participate, they, it shouldn't stop. And that's something I firmly believe in, we should not stop instruction for everybody to release them and change the, and that's something that's release time policies tend to do. So students who are released will still need to make up missed work and they would still receive a note and we release them and have nothing more to do with, you know, whatever the case may be, just like our current policy says that. Interestingly enough, after I did this, I heard somebody, I got a few phone calls about this and somebody said, well, this happened before, the same discussion, I know, like 20 years ago. And Dr. Gangl was superintendent then, so we looked through the archives and I'm like, when did we need to be found what they did, you know? So we did find it and it was in 1999, Rolling Chapel, and it was a non-denominational Christian program. Dr. Gangl's recommendation, "Due to the constitutional guarantees of our nation, First Amendment, and the separation of church and state, we can do nothing to promote or detract from individual religious freedoms. The Rolling Chapel is off school grounds and children are released by regular school procedures upon written parental permission to be released to personnel from the Rolling Chapel. This is the same procedure that would be used for a doctor or dentist appointment. We do not participate in nor promote the program, but at the same time, we cannot prohibit parents from releasing children for individual religious reasons." So that's almost exactly the same thing ever. I was like, oh!
Twenty years.
Twenty years ago. Can you tell he was one of my teachers? So that, that's my recommendation. After consulting with the attorney as well as school board attorney, it seems to be the safest. It doesn't promote nor prohibit that from happening. And we can't say that can or cannot, but it also protects the parents' rights to provide whatever religious instruction they feel is necessary, but also protects the school because a special policy of this nature because of the way it was presented could present the, the appearance of entanglement, okay? It really can. And it's a, it's sort of a slippery slope that I, I'm not sure we would want to get into at the school district. At the same time, parents, yes, you have the right to, you know, provide the religious instruction. That's your job, not ours. So that's, that's my recommendation.
Is there any questions?
So I'm going to ask for board consensus regarding what you want to do with this. If you want to go further, you can take my recommendation or I can go ahead and develop a release time policy if you still, you know, after you talk about it a little bit and you want me to do that, I can bring it to the next school board meeting. Or I can, if you are in agreement and you want some type of document that says something about how we handle this, then that could be done as a regulation. But again, I would warn you to, you know, be careful with that because any special consideration and policy or regulation may provide an argument for entanglement.
Questions? Anybody?
How would it work as is, how would parents excuse their child on a regular basis?
You speaking to the like we're following?
How would parents excuse their child on a regular basis for this program as it stands without our participation? You say they, they could participate as it is, how would that process work?
They would write a note for dismissal, just like you do for anything else. So I need my child to report to the office at this time to be released to this person. So maybe it's the Rolling Chapel rep, whoever it is, just like you do for anything else. We, if the parent says to do that, we have to do that.
So the student would have to come to the office, sign out, and then sign back in?
Well, the person would, the person taking care of them would have to sign out. And they would need parental permission each time for the release, yeah.
I have some thoughts about this. I actually wrote them down because I didn't want to make a mistake. If you don't mind?
Go.
All right. As a school board member, I feel my responsibility is to ensure that students receive a well-designed instructional program throughout each of their days of school. My commitment, as everybody knows, has always been to protect instructional time. Our teachers devote their energies and talents to planning instruction for all students. This is true of every period of every day, from language arts to music, from mathematics to physical education. We would not have these subjects in our students' schedules if we did not think they were important for students to learn and develop. Therefore, I want to see our students taking advantage of every minute of this well-planned educational day. We encourage parents to make doctors and dentist appointments outside of school day. Chronic absenteeism will receive attention from our staff out of concern for the well-being of students. We discussed that earlier today. Concerns would, I cannot support a systematic and repeated withdrawal of students from a school day's program unless that withdrawal occurs during non-instructional time, i.e. lunch and/or recess. I want to be clear that I am not against religious instruction. I benefited from religious instruction, as did all my children and grandchildren. All of us receive that guidance outside of school, either after school or on Sundays. I recognize a parent's right to withdraw his child, his or her child from school. I would urge families to consider scheduling this activity after school so that their children can benefit from both the entire school day and the religious instruction. I do believe we have the ability to have children taken after school to a regular bus stop that would be off school day. And they could do that after school.
Anyone else?
I also have a statement and I, I've heard the last presentation at our last school board meeting as, which is actually noted in our minutes, if you'd like to look at the minutes of the last meeting, that we were requested specifically to draft a release time policy. So I looked up what release time policies would entail, which as Mr. Grove indicated would mean we would release students from regular academic instruction. So that's where my thoughts are coming from. I agree with Dr. Grimsley's recommendation that we should not move forward to draft a policy accommodating release time for religious study, as was requested at our August meeting. It has been established that any parent or guardian of any student may have a student dismissed for themselves or another authorized person for any purpose. This makes the release time policy unnecessary. If the Rolling Chapel or any other religious organization chooses to set up on private property and is in no way connected with the schools, they already have the right to do so. I believe that it would be unwise to create a release time policy that excuses absent, absence for Rolling Chapel or for any other purpose, primarily because we have a really good thing going at our schools, unlimited time during the school year to accomplish the educational goals that we have set out. The state mandated profile of the Virginia graduate includes teaching core subject areas like reading and math and also covering career and life skills. End-of-day art, music, PE, STEAM, and band programming coming often. It serves as the glue that holds those core subject matters together in kids' minds and it provides interpersonal connections with their classmates, as well as opportunities for self-expression that set up students for academic success. Occasionally missing instruction in these areas could disadvantage those students who are released. Our board members and staff come from diverse backgrounds, but we have always been united in wanting what is best for our students. Our board and superintendent have been diligent in creating enhanced programming that will help us to meet the new higher standards that we will be judged on in order to remain fully accredited. We care about and have policies and programs that protect students' physical and emotional safety, promote their education, and encourage their development as future citizens. As a parent of two RCPS students, I have been continually impressed by the staff. They show respect and kindness. And I, my glasses don't work as well as they should. Our students and foster this, this school environment where students are expected to support one another. It's really true about our small school, it's a very supportive variety of kids support each other. They care about learning and they promote students' academic success. They also behave fairly and honestly and are good listeners and communicators and they're there to help students to get back on track if they make mistakes. To be the strongest school community possible, I support things that unite rather than divide us. Our small school division has a lot to be proud of. We are working every day to make it even better. Here are just a few examples. The community rallied to include hiring a school social worker in the budget this year to help address mental health needs head-on. The integration of the Commit to be Fit program in our schools has improved student and staff wellness and student readiness to learn. We are improving student attendance using protocols that are intended to show that we care about kids being in school and we miss them when they're gone. Restorative justice practices help kids to learn to manage angry feelings in productive ways. The hands-on learning and group work that happens in our classrooms help to make learning fun and interactive, honing students' critical thinking and decision-making skills that are vital to success in the workplace and in life. Facilities have recently been improved beyond just basic maintenance to create more attractive schools that show our community's respect for students and to provide enhanced learning opportunities. Again, Rolling Chapel or any other church has the right to set up during school time but outside of school purview if they choose to, with parents electing for their kids to participate during school time if they wish. Parents can also decide, as families do, to use some home time and maybe go to the church of their choice on weekends or for after-school or religious education. There's a lot of value in being together at school with our diverse community throughout the school day and partake fully in the programs that we have to offer. Schools also a great place to put into practice positive values like kindness, honesty, and integrity that we strive to live by and to teach our children. I took it this time, I tried to be...
Anyone else?
So legally, we can't endorse nor, nor hamper the program. So whether we create a policy or not, Rolling Chapel, it's a kind of a re-rolling chapel, can set up across the street, parents by word of mouth can send their children, irregardless of what we decide.
Yes.
And we have no vote, we have no conflict, we have no dissent?
Yeah. May I look at it?
I believe that's our consensus. Do we have a consensus? We have a consensus to do absolutely nothing?
I think we have a consensus to not create a policy.
That's what I said. There will be no policy because we don't have the right...
To do it.
To disallow. We don't, we don't have the right to...
There are some release time policies, but they're not what we want.
We're going to get ourselves in a position where we are becoming the judge of what things we will allow release time for, which we do not want to find ourselves in that space. It's not our job, right?
I want to go for it.
I believe we have consensus to do nothing. We have consensus. We're in good shape. And if there's nothing, could with great risk and hassle too, by the way. So appreciate the Rolling Chapel coming, presenting to us and provoking this conversation. It's good for us to have it and I wish them well. Do you have sufficient guidance?
I do, thank you very much.
Great.
Amazing, I like it.
Thank you for your comments, support. All right. Are you, you're done?
I'm all done.
Okay, you're done. Moving on to reports, a headwaters representative?
Okay, I have a report. I'll come to you back on in a moment. All right, so as I mentioned at the last meeting, the format for me as the school board representative to Headwaters has changed, so I had a meeting with the executive committee, one-on-one meeting after the regular Headwaters board meeting this past month. And this is my report for Headwaters. The Taste of Raphahannic was held on Saturdays, September 9th and it was a great success. The Headwaters board, the volunteers, local businesses, and all the patrons did their parts well to create a wonderful event. It was a lot of fun. And then the fall Headwaters programs are starting. The REED program orientation for volunteers will be on September 11th, I think that's tomorrow. And the after-school enrichment program will start on September 16th. And the program, this time is going to run three days a week, Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday. And then their schedule is going to align with our quarter, with the quarters of the school year in Mexico. And that's, they have found, so that, that seems like they have increased time. Headwaters welcomed two new board members, Carolyn Roth, who was a REED volunteer formerly, and also Bethany Basti, who was one of the perfect, was one of the high-scoring teachers and a great math teacher and is also a STEAM coordinator. The board has nine members and they are looking for more people to, to be members of the board. So since it's such a great public turnout today, I know that, and we're Headwaters board members. And then I also, I, I, we already heard about the CSA, but the Headwaters contributed a great amount to creating that, that possible. And that's, that's wonderful to see that it was approved by their board and it includes resource, the resource person as well as the seed money for the child student to come to the board.
Yeah, we should probably have at some point, we should let Kevin speak to what it takes to be a board member because it's only fun stuff. The meetings are fun, everything's fun. And he's exhausted.
Have you been a board, have you been a board member?
It's not like serving on a...
He's married to a board member.
It's a lot of hard work, but it's very worthwhile, hard work.
Yeah, you see a real bang for the time. So I encourage you to talk to Kevin or Rachel or someone if you're interested at all, faintly, in serving in a capacity.
That's my thought.
Thanks, Rachel.
We had an extremely successful Taste of Raphahannic.
It seemed like it.
Yeah, it was a happy...
Happy time.
It was a good vibe event.
It really was. Yeah, it really was.
Wasn't so hot.
Yeah, and people worked together.
Right. MBGS...
We didn't, we didn't meet, I'm not even sure when we, I can't find it all. It's supposed to be this Thursday, but I don't think... It's supposed to be this Thursday, but I don't think...
I didn't see anything. I think next month we go for one, I think. I'll get back to you.
All right, thanks. All right, moving on to public comments, anyone that would like to address the board this evening? If you would, would you rise, come to the podium, one at a time, and state your name, and your name and your district, and if you don't know your district, we'll help you out.
My name is Judy DeSarno. I'm in the Hampton District, and I'm also the chair of Headwaters. So I am here to add to Rachel's good report, and thank you, Mr. Grove. This was the 22nd Taste of Rappahannock on Saturday. And the Taste of Rappahannock raises two-thirds of all of our budget for all of the programs we provide for the teachers and the students. And this year, based on a very successful Taste of Rappahannock, last year, we're in a new budget system, we were also able to make a substantial contribution to what I call the new outdoor education pavilion. And we were also able, as reported by Dr. Grimsley, to pay half of the salary of the new position for the next three years, and do the kickoff donations for the kindergarten class, which we've also committed to for the first three years. But I'm really here to thank you all for all of the cooperation with the teachers, with the whole school system, and particularly Dr. Grimsley. Listening to her report today really made my heart sing because we've worked hand-in-hand on some of this. She has been such a gift to the school system, but also to Headwaters, because she comes and shares with us how we can be most helpful. And I want to thank you. I want to note that this year, our keynote speaker was the salutatorian of the 2018 graduating class, and now a student at William &amp; Mary, and also a Madison scholar, which means she's in the top 10% of the class at William &amp; Mary, Virginia Wyatt. I mention this because she is such a credit to the Rappahannock County Public Schools and also to Headwaters. Her remarks are going to be published in the Rappahannock News this week, and I really want to encourage you all to read them, because they're going to really make you proud. So, thank you.
They'll make you proud. They'll make you proud.
Well, yes.
My name is Jay Allen. I'm a Flint Hill resident, fairly new to Virginia. And just full disclosure, I have many children and grandchildren, none of whom have lived here or been in Rappahannock schools. And based on what I've heard tonight, I think that is a loss, but they work, they get good schooling elsewhere in Illinois anyway. I hope I'm missing something, and I am tired, and I'm an old person, but I'm worried there's a tell here that somehow it's being missed, and that is, I think I heard somebody reference that whatever students partake of this program, which sounds very meritorious and has a track record here and all that, they'd have to make up work for whatever class time they would have been in but are missing because of this Rolling Chapel. So is that the case? Okay? To me, that is a big tell in the sense that you're making a special accommodation for people of a certain class or a certain situation, and I think it runs the risk of coming across as majorly disturbing the separation of church and state, especially when it's clear, being a small community, that many people have religious preferences and affiliations that are known publicly and could come across as a conflict of interest. So that concerns me, because I like living here, I like the taxes, I think the schools sound like they're a wonderful going concern, but I'm worried about litigation, too, but from the other end, not the end that, I'm blanking on the name, Reynolds Church or anybody else would be suing if you interfere with what they want, so. That, to me, is a serious problem and something that I think you're glossing over, not intentionally. So, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Lee Simon in the Wakefield District. There are a lot of compelling arguments against this proposal, and I sent a number of them to you in an email. But if you have any doubt at all about whether to vote yes or no, there's an angel-wise axiom, when in doubt, don't. And to adopt a policy that would be this divisive when you have some doubts would argue that you should vote no.
Good evening. I'm Ellie Clark. I'm in Pudmeers District, and I'm a proud parent of two sons who are now in their, graduated from here, who are now in their 30s and 40s. Rolling Chapel for RCPs. The purpose of the Rolling Chapel, as it's being presented to the school board and to the public, is to teach children the centuries-old stories of the Old Testament. As these stories form a basis for several of the world's greatest religions, great religions, many of us can see value in our children being familiar with them. Many of us learn them ourselves as children. However, I read something which concerned me when I visited the website for Release Time, a pamphlet which inspired the Rolling Chapel idea, and I quote from that. "We are now reaching out to a generation of children who have no compass for right and wrong and are biblically illiterate, a generation that is unchurched yet hungers for answers. Now more than ever, our public schools are ripe for harvest as a mission field, and release time fills that need. We have a mission field right outside our doors to our public schools." End quote. These words clearly express an intention to seek religious converts among our young students, here called a mission field. Is that the honest rationale for Rolling Chapels? Beyond just teaching the stories of the Bible, is it also the purpose of Rolling Chapel to inspire and encourage the youngsters who attend to set about trying to convert their classmates to their particular religious beliefs? If so, this is frightening and a little bit chilling. I know of friends with some painful family stories that make this concern come alive for me. In both cases, the children involved were raised with an emphasis on moral behavior, the kind of behavior based on the Golden Rule. You know, there's a version of this, that we should treat others the way we like to be treated, in each of the world's major religions. The families of these children, however, were not formally affiliated with any particular church. In one case, a young child returned home from an encounter with a schoolmate, greatly distressed, because his friend had told him that he and his family were bad people because they didn't go to church. In another case, a slightly older child was given a comic book, which included a local church's teaching about hell. Now, as an adult, to this day, he vividly recalls reading this comic book alone in his room and feeling terrified that he and his family were going to hell. It's not a stretch to consider these experiences to be examples of psychological bullying. It's the duty of the school board, if Rolling Chapel is enacted, to demand assurances that promoting this kind of child mission work will not be part of their program. The duty of the school board is to continue doing the great job they're doing protecting the well-being, including the psychological well-being, of all our public school children, whether they come from church-going families or not. Please keep religious education in homes and churches.
I'm Anna Beaman. I'm from the Jackson District. W H Y L A, E T M A N. Nobody ever knows our spelling. And I'm from Amisville, Jackson District.
Okay.
There you go.
Well, Dr. Grimsley, and the speaker before me, and another speaker, just destroyed what I was going to say. But that's okay, I still have a few things. I don't mind. I'm glad that you decided not to vote on this release time policy. My concern is a bigger concern. I went to the same website, and I was a little distressed with some of the information, like the mission of the School Ministries Incorporated, which says, it's the closest missionary field you are ever going to have. A missionary is not only one who crosses an ocean. A missionary is one who sees across, and we have a mission field right outside the doors of our public schools. That distressed me. The other thing that I was thinking about was, and I'm a divvy because I can't do my report here, so I thought you'd done it, is that I, too, am concerned about the separation between church and state, and I do believe also it's a slippery slope. And even though it's legal to do this, it doesn't mean that people are going to agree with it, maybe litigated again, who knows? But I am concerned that this organization, which is where the release policy comes from, are not going to stop with release time, that there will be something else after this if this doesn't work for them. And that's my concern. It's a bigger concern than just Rappahannock County, because this organization is now going national, and they're going into every state in trying to do this. There are about seven or eight states already which have release time. Most of them are in the South, some of them are in the West, but that's a concern that I have. And so I'm glad that you decided what you decided tonight on this release policy.
Hello, my name is Jeff Lyman from the Stonewall Hawthorne District, and I'm a member of Mr. Grove's district. And I've been around for a while. My two daughters graduated from Rappahannock County High School in 2013, 2010. I've been there with the Lions Club, I was president, and served as the treasurer and board directors of the Childcare Learning Center at one point in my career. I think my wife was the Headwaters operative back before Headwaters actually had their first executive director. My wife, Teresa, was appointed to serve that organization. So I go back a little bit, and I have something I'd just like to share. I'd like to say, first of all, Mr. Grimsley, what a wonderful report you did. That was really thorough, we really brought it out, and I think it's good to see that information, because I think it leaves the situation very clear about what the government ought to do about this situation. What I wanted to do is just take a minute and express some positive thoughts for those who don't understand what the Rolling Chapel is all about, because I can appreciate the concerns about if it's going to be disruptive, or it's going to be a distraction, or it's going to be a disadvantage to some of the students. I want you to know that I've participated in this program, and I know the individuals involved personally, from the last 17 years of being involved with Culpeper and Madison Counties, which do the Rolling Chapels right now. And it's a fantastic program. It's, the parents are the ones who make the decision to release the students, so it's not an operative, active, you know, let's go find out. I can appreciate the scariness if you don't really know what's going on, but I want to let you know, it's really a great program. The children that do get released, they come, they gather, they have like a little time of learning, and then afterwards, they have the opportunity to go to a camp and also have other fun together. So there's education, there's community building, and it's not at all something that I think is dark and is scary for Rappahannock. I think, from my perspective, being a longstanding resident of Rappahannock, I wanted just to reassure my fellow citizens and my neighbors that it's a beautiful program, and a program that I'm frankly glad to see there's interest in it. I was hoping for some time that it would come, and now I'm glad that there is some interest. I hope as it comes in, that people will give it a chance, and don't fear what they don't know about. Check into it. Thank you.
Quiet. Quiet. Anyone else this evening?
I have a couple of questions.
Can you bring them to us after the meeting's over?
Okay. That's fine.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to make a statement tonight?
I'm Ann Georgia McCambray, and I'm in Pudmont District. And I just want to say that I think this was a really well-thought-out decision. I also totally believe in the separation of church and state, and I also think that I have absolute faith in every Christian organization here in the county, and every church, that people are going to be able to do what has been done for 200 years of getting their kids educated, and still spending time with their children after school, weekends, I mean, really using their religious faith at those times, and creating kids, raising children who are absolutely steeped in the Bible and steeped in their religious beliefs. And I am sure that they are going to be able to do it fine without actually impinging on the school time to get this done. I mean, I really think that everybody out here who has kids and takes them to church, that is wonderful. It's really great, and I absolutely have faith that you will be able to do that without actually taking the kids out of school on that purpose. Yay, faith!
Thank you. Anyone else? See?
I'm John Hiddleston. I'm the local minister. I'm a retired teacher and coach at this Rappahannock County High School, and a former editor of the Rappahannock News. I think it's ironic that on the eve of the 18th anniversary of terrorist attacks on American soil, that so many are here tonight to protest the legal and constitutional rights of Americans. Usually, traditionalists are called the fear-mongers in our society, but tonight, the shoe is on the other foot. We know through legal release time, students can attend non-curricular clubs provided they have parental permission. We should not even be having this discussion tonight. Shakespeare might say that this is much ado about nothing. Then again, maybe not. After all, Shakespeare referenced scripture more than 400 times in his plays and poetries. And I suppose some folks these days would like to throw Shakespeare under the bus for going that, or kicking him out of the classroom. Maybe that's the fear of the next step. The primary source of Western literature is the Bible. The prime mover of Western civilization is the Bible. Since when is the Bible not an educational book? No other book has influenced art and law and literature more. How sad, some folks dismiss the Bible out of hate. We scratch our heads and we wonder why our youth are quitting on life and committing suicide, but who knows how Job responded when his wife challenged him to just curse God and die? Who knows how teenage Hebrew boy named Joseph stayed pure upon being seduced by the wife of Potiphar? Who teaches the Golden Rule or coaches children to love their neighbors? Who tells us not to kill, or steal, or defraud? The Bible tells us so. It is difficult how... It is difficult how antipathy toward this book has spawned, the book that has spawned three world religions, as Ede said, would lead anyone to deny any child access to a mobile classroom where they can learn the greatest stories ever told with parental permission, of course. The great advances in American history were initiated in her churches. Civil rights, voting rights, workers' rights, prison reform. Have you not ever heard of Dr. Reverend Martin Luther King Jr.? Time Magazine called Jesus of Nazareth "The Single Most Significant Figure in All Human History." Among their reasons, Jesus has done more to advance civilizations, specifically women's rights, than anyone else, ever. We stand before a school board charged with overseeing the educations of our children, and we pray ten that this book is worthless. That this book ought not to be in the public sphere. Keep it private in your churches and in your homes. I may as well live in China. And we blather before this school board like a bunch of fools because we are fools afraid to face the truth that the Bible has taught for thousands of years. Has intellectual freedom become foreign to us? Tomorrow, we celebrate America, the brave resilience of a people in the aftermath of terror. And we're acting like the Bible has nothing to do with a basic education. So tonight, school board, let's not fearfully and foolishly step away from our most sacred freedoms. If we gotta take a step backwards, let's go back to the days we had a Bible bus outside the elementary school camps.
Hi. I'm Suzanne Teres, and I'm from the Jackson District. Like you can't hear me? I'm a mother of two adopted children, and I have no skin of the skin because they're too old for Bible bus. But I feel that because my husband and I adopted our kids, we have a different chance of life. They have opportunities they never had before. I have a child that is a leader and a child that's a modeler. I have a child that struggled due to birth parent choices, had drugs. I have one that is a leader, but the one with the drugs has some mental health issues. A while ago, during one of my counseling sessions for my child, a therapist said something to me that stuck with me. All children are belong. To a group, family. Not everyone's in a band, not everyone's in a club. Many kids are longers. There's always one group that accepts every child. It's the drugs. They don't care where you come from or what you do. So I did not grow up with a Bible bus, but I didn't see anything wrong with it. We have a choice as parents to allow that or to not allow it. We opt out if we don't want it. But if we break down the teachings of the Bible and take the Jesus part out, the book that teaches us the audience, right from wrong, don't steal, don't kill. Can all of us say that this is being taught to all of our children in this county? No, it can't be. We have many kids in this county that aren't being parented. We have an option. We all have an opinion about this one way or another. But let's face it, many parents are not in loyalty to these kids' lives. Just right yesterday, a Chester Gabb parent was just arrested for doing drugs in the hotel. I have been blamed by teachers since I've had my children in school for being involved. I thought it was the stupidest thing I'd ever heard. Why wouldn't I be involved? And then I learned there are many parents not involved in their kids' lives. These children are at school, you figure it out. These kids, some of them can't make it to after-school sports. They can't go to church on Sundays because their parents choose not to do it or they are working. We have grandparents raising children in this county because their parents are blacked out on drugs and they've been taken away. We are hearing about the drugs in the school. Let's not face it, we do have a homeschool system, but we have problems. Their kids bathing in bathrooms, there are issues, there are bullies. So if we were such great parents where we have bullying in our schools, look on social media, it's happening every day in this county. If we didn't have these issues, we wouldn't have a social worker that needed to be hired. Just heard her speak last night about all the issues that she's dealing with in our schools. We can have a hotline that we can report issues. So I've been on a couple of mission trips into the schools of Appalachia, where there is no hope. Coal mines have closed down, parents are addicted to drugs. And we go in for a week at Easter and we teach these kids a symbol lesson to Easter. And then kids come up to us and said, "I remember my parents told me about you guys coming into schools." People have come up to me and said, "I want to be like you when I grow up." And I was like, "Good God, why?" But we came in and offered them hope. So if one child, if this Bible bus makes a difference, if one child in this community and it makes that child feel belonging, then it's worth it. And that's all I have today.
This is pretty great. Wasn't gonna say what I have written, and I'm really proud of it.
Could you state your name?
Barbara Dolph, I think, in Piedmont District. I've been having a terrible day today. I live with an illness that's hot. It's not even really, I don't function very well, so I'm a little stressed. We all know the arts curriculum benefits academic achievements and socialization goals. For release time students, the subject matter and activities would be diminished because the opportunity to build relationships and strengthen community would be interrupted. One quarter of the instructional time is lost and the relationships that build in an already minimal program aren't able to perform. I would just like to say that the Rolling Chapel meets the missionary goals of John's Church to recruit new members. And I have no problem with that goal. Anyone who knows Minister John knows how successful he is in meeting that goal. His parish is of a large and loyal flock. His Scouts and Children's Group with the church, the community is appreciated. I've written my husband and I try to attend his 9/11 remembrance ceremonies. Last week, I attended an all-day mental health workshop at the church in which there are excellent speakers on topics such as domestic violence and substance abuse. I was a practicing psychotherapist to John in his prison ministry. All they open said, "I got one play out," and it lasted over a year a couple of times. So we have a good working relationship. And I think the only thing I want to say to John is consider that the kids are losing an important part of their curriculum and the ability to keep those relationships and tie them away from screwing us going. And it's really to say, "You do your thing, you do it well." And I appreciate it. We've gone to many activities at that church, and I'll go again, we'll probably be there tomorrow. But it shouldn't be interrupting because the Rolling Chapel will interrupt the continuity of the classes and the work that these students do. So I continue to be a fan of John's, but I see it differently from what you see as it in terms of the Rolling Chapel at this school.
Right, anyone else?
Thank you for an opportunity to speak. My name is Randy Clark from the Wakeville District. And as a former student at Rappahannock County Schools, I was raised in a household that was really poor. Both parents worked all the time and never had an opportunity to attend church or any school programs outside of school hours. Not that my parents, they don't go to church, they still don't go to church. They didn't then, but they were never opposed to it. And it would allow me had I had the opportunity. And this actually gives children the opportunity from households that are poor to be able to participate in a group that will accept them when maybe other groups don't accept them. Sports programs that are done in the afternoons. I played baseball in Babe Ruth. The only reason I was able to play then was that a parent that actually picked me up from my house, took me to every game, and that was how I grew up. So I just really appreciate, you know, us following the letter of the law that says that we should not infringe on parental rights when the parent are okay with their kids going to anything really that is allowed by law. And to speak one, people, you know, I hear a lot of people saying that we need to confine our beliefs as Christians to our church. Reynolds Memorial Baptist Church is a building. I am the church, Christians are the church. We are in the community, we aren't a building. And, you know, there was a story of Jesus was asked, you know, "Do we pay taxes?" Jesus says, "Well, who's won? The Mary, it's the coin." And he says Caesar. And he said, "Well, give Caesar what is Caesar's, give God what is God's." And Jesus was telling them that we need to follow the law. And by doing this, we aren't infringing on any laws, we aren't infringing on parental rights. And as Christians, we need to go outside of our building and go to the fence and say, you know, "Hey, we're here, we're here as a support, we want to teach, we want to care about, we want to support our community because we are Rappahannock." Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Bob Hope, and I live in Amesville. Hope, H-O-P-E.
Hey Bob.
I think that might have been. Well, I live in Amesville, but I am outside of Rappahannock. But I am the executive director for Children's Bible Ministries. So I wanted to bring a little clarity and maybe answer a few questions that maybe some of you have. I wanted to state that indeed we are a mission organization. And we are missionaries because we are not funded in any other way. We are not funded by churches, I mean, in a payroll sense. We are not funded by the government. People individually give to us as missionaries. And as a mission organization, we do reach children, we reach teens, and we do want to come alongside of parents. And I know that you have some questions. And I know that the unknown can be something to fear. Our desire as a ministry organization is to help build healthy children, healthy communities, and to pour into the communities that we work in. We are not new to the area, we are not new to the United States. We have been around a long time. In Virginia, we started in Page County. We have been there for many years, over sixty years. We are in five counties. We're in Page, Culpeper, Madison, Green, and Orange. We were in Rappahannock at one time prior to me taking over, and we had some logistical complications and could not continue here for a period of time. We, as an organization with Children's Bible Ministry, we have a goal. We teach the Bible, we want to teach it accurately. That is what we do. But this is really an issue about parents' rights. A parent has a right to do with their child what they want to do. That is the bottom line. And the Supreme Court has ruled that the parent has that right, and they have upheld it several times. This is a right that they have to have their children educated religiously. And they have the right to choose who does that. But parents also have the right to not choose to send their children to religious education. It is not infringing on parents' rights who do not want their children to come to release time to the Rolling Chapel, to taking away from the arts and other classes. Release time is one time a month during the school year. It is not weekly, it is not several times a week. It's one time a month, generally for thirty to forty-five minutes a time. Okay? So it's not ongoing all the time. It is not using government funds, school board funds in any way. The money is raised through people who give to our organization outside of what support is given to missionaries for the purposes of having rolling chapels who pay for the electric that is used and all the funds that are necessary in order to make release time happen. We also have a camp outside, you know, Culpeper in Stevensburg. And we help the kids with memorization and Bible verses, and they have an opportunity to earn scholarship dollars to come to a week of camp. And we also have scholarships for those that just can't afford it to come to a week of camp in the summer. All of those are from donated funds that people give so that children have a place to be able to come and spend a week in the summer. The chapel time, it is singing songs, there's games, there's puppets, and there is a Bible lesson time that we have with them. But again, this is about a parent's right to choose for their child. We're not trying to take away from the school. In fact, we're trying to help make better students. And yes, it is true, some of the things you've read, that our children today, from a biblical standpoint, are illiterate. They're not like you and I. You understand Bible stories, you've heard Bible stories. Children today have not even heard Bible stories. The kids that come to our rolling chapel, probably half of them, sixty percent, don't go to a church that is their church. Probably seventy percent don't own a Bible in order to read about Bible stories. This is their only exposure to religious training. In the society that we live in, where parents work, many parents, both parents work, Sundays may be the only day they're at home. And many of them choose not to build a church where their kids may get this religious education.
Anyone else? Right. Thank you for sharing tonight. It's good to hear our neighbors' perspectives and to be neighbor. At this time, we're gonna move on to action items. The only action item for this board this evening is the motion concerning the Sherman Savings Account memorandum of understanding. Is there a motion to approve the existing memorandum of understanding as it was presented in your documents?
Sure.
We have a motion, Mr. Grove. We have a motion, Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second. From Ms. Meyer. Is there any discussion? Thank you for your work. And it brings together a lot of parties. It's a good piece of work. I know, it's amazing offering, amazing. All in favor of them saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Close no? It's ordered? For our county, and our students, and our culture. I think it's awesome. Is there any new business this evening? The next rigley scheduled for me, I have a date, second Tuesday of October, is the eighth, at six thirty PM at the same location. Now entertain a motion, we go into closed session.
I move the board convening into closed session for a following purpose, to discuss and reconsider the appointment of staff, members for professional classified and coaching positions, resignation of a volunteer coaching position, the dubbed administrator leave hearing, and discussion of superintendent's goal pursuant to Juvenic Code 2.2 that 3711A1.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Second for Ms. Meyer? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Close no? It's ordered, so we're going to be in closed session. We'll recess and give you a chance to step